In to order. I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of June 23rd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number three is the public and student comment. There are no comments, but there is a written comment that I would strongly suggest that everybody take a look at that has been printed off and put in front of you. You can do that at a later time. Agenda item number four. Legal expenses. Mr. Vigut, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, is presenting summary report presenting all legal counsel expenses incurred during the 2024-2025 school year. The report is broken down by law firm and by type of legal advice sought. This is a written report that requires no action, but good information. Josh?
Thank you. Not a ton to add here. Thirty-four thousand roughly in legal expenses in the fourth quarter. There were a couple of things billed at the end of the third quarter that were added to third quarter, just so you know. But total for the year, looking at just shy of sixty-five thousand in legal expenses, much lower than in previous years and about thirty-five thousand dollars under budget. So it's good.
Any questions from board members?
Can I ask the board a question? Is this something you want to see quarterly? That's what I've been bringing it to you? Okay. I can continue to do that.
I think it's a very good idea to see it.
Okay.
We used to see it less, but then if we got kind of off and we didn't find out until later.
It's harder to know when.
It was just, even though it's really quick, it's nice just to see along the way and make sure we're not missing something.
Sounds great.
Agenda item number five. Presented summary lists of the legal firms the district makes use of for the variety necessary legal needs. Comment about that? Josh?
I don't believe there's any new firms on here this year compared to last year.
Added the newest one last year.
Yep.
Right on. All right. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board, the attached list of law firms the board and the district shall access for legal services deemed necessary by the superintendent of schools or his designee.
So moved.
Any follow-up questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number six. Administration asked the Education Operations Committee of the whole to recommend to the board a date, time, and location for the budget hearing and annual meeting, thus allowing full board approval in a timely manner. This will allow all notices and timelines to be met for an annual meeting between May fifteenth and October 31st. Person to state statute 120.081A. Josh? I'm going to, or is it going to go to Josh or is it going to go to Kathy?
Probably both of us. This is one of the things the board had asked us to have a discussion about. And so the idea is a weight of what we're interested in. If we wait until our October date, we have far more concrete. We know exactly what the dollar amount is that we're talking about in the budget. What it doesn't give us is the flexibility that if something goes haywire to bring it back in front of you because our timeline is really tight. Whereas if we go in September, it gives us more flexibility that if the board has questions, we can bring it back to you in October. Some school districts do October, some have done September. We kind of bring it in front of the board to see what your thoughts are, if you're directed for us.
And I think Lance, you had a comment based on a question from last year.
Yeah, I asked last year for this to come back this year and Cassie was on top of it and Josh brought it back. I actually forgot. But so when we have the annual meeting and we have the public in, and I know not a lot of public actually shows up, but we have our official vote, we have our official vote on numbers that aren't official numbers because they don't come in until October. So I always just thought that was odd. And I know some districts do that, other districts wait. And so I didn't request it with the thought that I want to change it, but more or less just I wanted to discuss it to find out, is there a good reason why we have our annual meeting when we don't have the official numbers rather than having the annual meeting in October when we have the actual official numbers? Because if there's a good reason, I'm fine with it. I just didn't know what that would be.
And I would just echo that districts throughout the state do it throughout the summer and fall. We used to do it prior to Bob when Chex was here. We actually used to do it in June in this district. The one thing I would say is that I agree that it gives us more flexibility to change something if the annual meeting is held in September versus holding it right up against the deadline in October.
So we do, but we do change something. Like we always change something after the annual meeting because then the numbers, the actual numbers come in and so then we change for the October.
We do update it slightly. I guess if something were to go sideways in the annual meeting, then we would only have a couple of days to schedule an emergency board meeting because it has to be held. My understanding is it has to be held by October 31st. I really, it doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want.
It's the timeframe between the annual meeting and the final meeting where we have to, that's really the biggest issue, having a little space in between those two meetings is what helps.
Right. Or, you know, if the board were to not approve of something at the annual meeting and want to see it again and we had to schedule another meeting, something like that.
So it's kind of a double check on everything. Sarah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think I would be really anxious holding an annual meeting before it was due into DBI, only because one bad case of the flu, one lack of quorum, one big issue. Just feels like we're putting a lot of strain that doesn't necessarily have to be there.
Yeah, no, I can see that. Just the annual meeting isn't a board meeting. The board is at the annual meeting, but the annual meeting is a public hearing. So we sign up to vote, just like the rest of the public signs up to vote. And so it just always seemed odd to me that we were having a public hearing and during the presentation, we explained, you know, I don't know why nobody's here, but by the way, none of these numbers are final. You know, it just always, it seemed awkward to me. But if, if there would be an issue with our timeframe to run it in, you know, both meetings in October, that makes sense to me. So I'm comfortable with whatever administration recommends. I didn't just want to keep doing it because that's always the way it's been done if there wasn't really a good reason for it that way.
I appreciate the question. My preference would be to keep it in September. If you wanted to move it, be amenable to that.
Well, Lance, I thank you for bringing that forward last year to take a look at it and question and then ask the question and have that decided at this meeting. So we can move forward if we would like, if that's what you're pushing for, administration? You're talking about September 22nd?
Correct.
All right. With that, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board to approve Monday, September 22nd, 2025 as the date for the 2025-2026 budget hearing and annual meeting. The meeting will be held at six o'clock in the Nicholson Boardroom at the Longfellow Administration Center, beginning with the budget hearing, followed by the annual meeting. Any follow-up questions by anyone? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number seven. Prior to October 1st, only equalized valuations from municipalities are available. In order to project property value changes by a school district, an assumption must be made that all property values in any given municipality change in a uniform manner. With this assumption, the district's property value is projected to increase to eight point nine eight. Correct. For 2025-2026, mil rate calculation purposes, for mil rate calculations. Certified property value will not be available until October 1st. The given projected property value will be used for the initial budget and during the annual meeting.
Perfect. Just a couple of things to add. We do an estimate on this and we get estimates from across the state, different partners. And ours is usually pretty close to in line with theirs. So this year, we are looking at eight point nine eight percent. Last year was nine point nine eight percent. And the year before that, I think, was right around there, a little higher. So we're in our third or fourth year of significant equalized value increases. And this is pertinent because later in our conversation, we will be looking at a discussion about the mil rate. And keeping, keeping your mil rate steady when your equalized values are jumping by leaps and bounds is, is hard and would require a rapidly increasing levy. So I just wanted to add that for a little context. We do have these estimates of what the values are likely to change in all of the villages, townships, and cities that we are a part of. And then on this next screen, we have, if we were to adopt one of the levy options that we're proposing today, based on the estimates we have today, this is what it would look like in terms of a levy breakdown by fund for each of those cities, villages, and townships. I'd like to stress that these are estimates and likely to change. I just want to show it so everyone knows. Any questions on equalized value estimates? The total value in the district went from six point one eight five billion to six point seven four one billion. Okay, no questions on that.
Okay. Agenda item eight. Josh is going to be continuing on here. Office presented 2025-2026 budget booklet for initial review. Contained in publication is a preliminary budget which the committee is being asked to recommend for use at the budget hearing and annual meeting. Anything to add to that?
Just want to talk a little bit about the budget. The budget book is, it's not pulled up here, but no, it's okay. It's attached to the meeting. It's available. This is a draft of that, but it's a very insightful eighty-page document if you're interested at all in the school finances. I highly recommend it to anyone watching or listening. I did want to talk a little bit about the budget. We had some challenges with the budget this year. Continued funding struggles is one. The biggest one we've had for the third straight year is health insurance costs are far outpacing revenues. So we did have a seven percent health insurance increase, but what was recommended to us was a fourteen, fifteen percent increase and we are self-funded. So that's been hard, but we, you know, we have had some good things. It's the first time since I've been here that our staff salary changes were in line with CPI. So we feel good about that. Second straight year of pretty significant staffing cuts. So I think that's a hard one for, for us and for everyone. And that, those are FTE reductions, not, not people reductions, but still. And then when we present the budget, which is balanced, just important to remember that, that did, that streamlining that we got through consolidation was a big part of that. I think it's good to mention that the special education reimbursement rate is going from, we were getting about thirty point seven to forty-two. We've been cautioned quite a bit that we might not see the full forty-two. It might be just a hair under that because it's based on an assumption of what will be spent throughout the state. So. This is a graph of our per pupil revenue and per pupil categorical aid over time. The red line that you see there on the graph is inflation. So everything between the top of the dark blue line and the red line over the last fifteen years, that's all money that the district has not had compared to inflation. So it's a lot to operate without and that does add up over time. A couple of things will impact this, the budget between what we're presenting now and what you're going to see in September and October. Final district staffing plan, we actually are doing quite well. I think probably the best in recent memory in terms of having staff positions filled. So that's great. Certified property values, equalization aid, final certification. Third, Friday pupil count, so it's part of a three-year rolling average. And then a big one is the voucher cost. So that is money that, that we tax directly for support of private schools in our district. So the budget we are presenting is a balanced budget. In previous years, we've adopted a deficit budget and for a long time, that worked out really well for the district. We didn't spend up to every dollar of expenditure that we budgeted, but in the last couple of years, that has not been the case. So we thought it was prudent to present a balanced budget if at all possible. So we're looking at one hundred and seventeen million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars in both expenses and revenue. We do see a increase in the total revenue limit, a decrease in state general aid, which will lead to, we'll hire general fund levy. That's part of our next discussion, but I will answer any questions that you have on the general fund budget.
Questions from the board? About one question pertaining to the consolidation. You alluded to that. I'm sure you're still in discussion about where you're going to put that money, but that's a question that seems to be rolling around in the community. Where are you going to put that money? What fund? Is it Fund 49? Is it, what fund are we thinking about? Throw that out to you, Josh.
And we're talking for, yep, for the building sales? Yeah, we'll certainly bring any, anything we're thinking in front of the board. Yep, for your feedback. So that's good.
But there are savings also beyond just the building sales. There are, you know, obviously the FTE reductions and some pretty big savings that I think we had at a prior meeting, it was like two million dollars already recognized.
Pretty significant.
So we'd be looking at some pretty hard decisions. We had hard decisions anyway, but it'd be even harder if we didn't have two million dollars of reductions because of that.
I think that shows a good step in the right direction, what we're doing by streamlining everything that we're looking at. And I appreciate that. So go ahead.
So that's all I have on the, on the budget. If you wanted to make the motion at this time.
I will do that.
I got a quick.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead.
What, is the savings alone, has that helped the situation about last year? Because you had mentioned about the potential in '26 of maybe having short-term borrowing, but now I saw that it was less likely. Is that basically coming from those savings? Or how did our situation improve?
Yep. So we've done significant work with, with the board in terms of balancing our budget. When we were talking very seriously about short-term borrowing, we were looking at four to five million dollar budget shortfall for this year. So hopefully we will not have that this year. Last year turned out okay in terms of where the final numbers ended up. Of course, that will be presented to the board as part of the audit report. So I would say, yeah, the changes we made certainly helped and hopefully we don't have to short-term borrow in the near future. If the health insurance thing doesn't turn around, that'll be a problem for the district. And just so everyone knows, why district short-term borrow is that the revenue doesn't come in, in a continuous way throughout the year. So you reach a point in usually mid-December where districts are short on, on the ability to make expenses, to meet expenses. And a number of districts throughout the state do short-term borrow as a way to meet those expenses. This district has been very fortunate to not have to do that.
Well, and one of the reasons is because of the Fund 10, you know, because we have a healthy Fund 10 balance that protects us from that. But that's why we have to be concerned as we move forward on where the Fund 10 is going to be as well.
Yep. They have a fund balance. I completely agree.
Any other questions? Let me get the motion out there. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the Board of Education a preliminary 2025-2026 general fund budget of one hundred and seventeen million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars for expenses and one hundred and seventeen million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars for revenue for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing. Follow-up questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item nine. Contained in the presented 2025-2026 budget booklet is a corresponding tax levy to support the budget. Once approved, this levy will be presented at the budget hearing and annual meeting. Follow-up comments?
I do have a couple, if that's okay. And this will get a little sticky, so just bear with me. What you're looking at is a graph of the mil rate over time. That's the line. It's gone down pretty consistently over the last ten years. And the overall tax levy, which has been pretty steady. It dipped significantly last year, down by about four or five million. The district has used debt defeesance, essentially prepaying on our capital debt as a way to help manage the mil rate and overall levy. And we'll have a little discussion about that further on. It's been a pretty successful strategy. We've retired, I think, over seventy million dollars of our capital debt and saved over nineteen million dollars of interest payments for our taxpayers. So that's a good thing. The bottom part of this is the mil rate over time in the district. So the 25-26 number is just a placeholder, but you can see that it's decreased significantly over time. Rate for that, two reasons for that. Relatively flat district budgets or decreasing district budgets and those property values that we talked about increasing by leaps and bounds because mil rate is a kind of a product of your equalized property values. So there's two, two ways we could look at this. We've historically used defeesance to prepay on the capital debt and match the mil rate. Last year, we defeased fifteen point four million dollars. Decreases in state aid, increase in a revenue limit, along with some exemptions that we lost. This year, we're going to increase the general fund levy. So we've been looking at a decreasing general fund levy the last couple of years. This year, it will be increasing. That's not something we really can control. It's just, it is what it is. So we have two options. The first option, the option that would be the administration's recommendation would be to, if you look at the top line in red, you see the general fund levy. It's going up by about five million. It would be to decrease our debt defeesance by an amount that allowed the levy to remain flat. So that means we're not increasing what we're asking of our, of our local taxpayer. We would still be able to, and these numbers are right now estimates, but we would still be able to defees or prepay a little more than eleven million dollars of our debt. And that's in addition to principal and interest. So that's not minimum, that's above and beyond the minimum. The other option that we have, that we could choose to maintain our entire debt defeesance strategy of approximately fifteen point four four million. The impact of that would be an increase to the overall levy of about four million dollars, but the mil rate will stay flat. A lot of districts over the last decade have talked a lot about maintaining a flat, stable mil rate. We actually talked to PMA today and a lot of districts are moving away from always using that language because if your equalized value is going up by ten, twelve, fifteen percent a year, it's very hard to maintain a flat mil rate without a equally increasing levy. So it's a strategy that's been moved away from by a lot of districts in the immediate. If we get to a point where we have one percent or two percent increases in equalized value, I think you would see a return to that. So the districts, the administration recommendation would be to explore a levy more in line with what we had last year while still maintaining healthy debt defeesance. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
So you feel comfortable staying where we're at?
I do. The, one additional strategy, and there's not an option for this on here, is increasing the levy by the amount of net new construction. We have about one point seven nine percent net new construction in our equalized value. And the theory on that is it would allow the increase in your tax levy to be dispersed amongst the new construction. But overall, I'm, I'm comfortable. We're still prepaying a significant amount of our debt.
In the long run, it saves money for us.
By prepaying debt?
Yes.
We would be prepaying less this way. So, but it would still be a significant savings for us and for the taxpayers.
Are there any questions?
Doing it this way now?
Mm-hmm.
What, what does that do for us in four or five years if we were able to pass another capital referendum and did more improvements to buildings?
So it's a great question and I can give you a general answer. Of course, I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head. What we're seeing here is we still have eleven million dollars that we're prepaying essentially on our debt. So you would have space to assume eleven million dollars of annual debt without increasing the overall levy because you could push out that prepayment if that is what the district chose to do.
So in five years, we'd prepay an additional fifty-five million, in theory, right? So that opens up fifty-five million dollars worth of borrowing against what the mil rate is?
You, you would create space to open up for borrowing while maintaining a level mil rate. Districts, of course, are not bound to a level mil rate. You could go for a referendum that increased the mil rate. But what you are doing, something pretty significant that the board and the district have done is eliminated some of the longer-term payments. So we will actually pay off our debt quicker. So that does create some space to potentially go to referendum if needed. I know we've identified over, I think, sixty million dollars of deferred maintenance needs in the district. And that's without talking about any building improvements, so.
Well, I think it's important that the community knows that what we have done in the past with defeesance, we've lowered that debt over a period of time. That is really saving us money by doing that. But if we go to what you're suggesting, we dig into that, we stop the payment, we're still in the good because of the fact that, you know, all we're doing is we're not paying pre-debt.
We're not paying as much pre-debt, but yes, in the case of a new referendum, we would still just be paying our debt. We'd be making our payments.
Even, even this year, you know, one of the things we explain to the community is if, if, if they would have approved the referendum, so if the community approves an eight million dollar a year referendum, we'd be looking at this budget right now and instead of prepaying eleven million dollars of debt, we'd be prepaying three million dollars of debt and the taxes to the community would be staying flat, just like we said they would. I, I think the recommendation makes sense. The only concern that I have is we described it as mil rate because that's kind of what people think about. We described it as whether the referendum passes or not, your mil rate's going to stay flat. This is going to cause the mil rate to go down. And so we're going to have to do a good job of explaining that the mil rate didn't go down because you said no to the referendum, because there will be people who will say, see? Told you. They lied. The referendum didn't pass and the mil rate went down, when actually the mil rate's going down because property value's going up. We're taxing the same amount.
Yep.
You know, the amount that we can control is how much we tax. We can't really control the mil rate, so to speak. We control how much we tax and we're keeping that flat. So that, that's really the only concern I have is it's going to take some messaging because the next time we come around and ask for a referendum and we say, we're going to keep your taxes flat, they're going to say, well, last time when we said no, our mil rate went down. So just keep that in mind, that that message is going to have to be out there to explain that we kept it flat.
There's definite messaging issues because Jim and I attended an event where we got questioned about firing seventeen people and we didn't fire seventeen people, we eliminated seventeen FTEs. And then how many administrators did we get rid of if we got rid of seventeen teachers? So they didn't understand that. We invited them to the meetings, actually, so they could be a part of conversations.
Those would be great conversations to have with community members.
Well, I think it's a very important thing that there's still, the community's still reflecting back on the past, taking a look at when it was stated that we weren't going to release anybody even though we were consolidating. Well, that's coming back continually to question us. Well, you said, well, attrition takes place too. And attrition is the main reason why we have saved money as well. We don't need as many people. So when retirement takes place, people leave the district, we don't fill those positions. don't fill those positions. Now we are saving money, and we're streamlining, going back to, again, streamlining what we're doing. And I, I think most of our discussion right now is to make sure that we're saying this so that people hear it, and that we can continue, I think, with the PR. In the future, we're going to have to continue to put that out there, so people see that as well. Just my comment. Anything else from the board? Josh?
Because I always forget to do it, I'd like to thank Noel Torson and our amazing business office. I forget every single year. And in ten or fifteen years, when he retires, I won't have that opportunity anymore.
I see their heads shaking.
Just want to say thank you. That's all I have.
Well, we thank them as well, the whole department. It's very important, so. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the Board of Education a projected tax levy of forty-four million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item number ten, Red Granite Charter School Student Fees. Red Granite Representatives Heidi Kleinschmidt and Maude Mangan, I believe, is Maude here, will present proposed changes to the student fees for Red Granite 4K and kindergarten students.
Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to introduce Maude Mangan, the new Red Granite Charter School Principal. She's here with me tonight. The reason we're bringing the fees forward right now is that last fall, when the secondary schools and other elementary schools' fees were presented for the school year, Red Granite did not have any assigned to their students, so I'll let Maude share with you some of the fees that the 4K and kindergarten students will have this year.
Thank you all. So our proposal is for cooking in the early childhood classes. So one of the Waldorf education practices that we see in early childhood, 4K and 5K, is to make meals with teachers and students, and these will be snacks, and they're hearty snacks. We bake bread, we make soup, really nice wholesome food that the kids get to participate in. It enriches their language development through these meaningful conversations. It enriches their math skills through measuring and counting. And we're asking for thirty dollars per semester for four-year-old kindergarten students, and sixty dollars per year for four-year-old kindergarten students, and then doubling that for the 5K. So sixty per semester or a hundred and twenty per year for kindergarten students. Some additional benefits, if you would like to hear them, are the benefit to rhythm and routine. It creates a sense of emotional security in our classrooms, so building in a meaningful meal routine. We're modeling healthy food choices, practical life skills, sensory development through taste, texture, and scent, the social-emotional development of cooperating and sharing meals and cooking for one another. It's a really sweet scene, if you ever would like to stop by and see Ms. Lindsay cook with her kids.
So it costs money to feed.
It costs money.
Exactly. So obviously, you're looking at this that you need to have that in order to take care of the children.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. What I'm going to do is I'm going to put the motion on the table and then open up for questions. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the change to the Red Granite student fees for 4K and kindergarten students as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, any questions from the board? Follow-up questions?
The only concern I had was alleviated when I got to the bottom of the presentation, and where it pointed out that any families with, with hardship, that, you know, we'll find a way to make it work. We just don't want any students to think they can't take part in this program because being reduced or whatever, so.
Absolutely, and I'm glad you brought that up. It's a question that I've been navigating a little more closely, whether or not we offer right off the bat to our free and reduced families an alternative, so that, that is something we are working out. But we do have the ability to fundraise for that.
Any other questions?
Is there any opt-in or opt-out? Maybe they don't feel that that'd be a benefit for them, for paying the extra to have those? I just feel like everything you did list for gaining out of this program is kind of like a family-oriented, those, those are all things they could be learning at home. And, you know, when you do send your child to school or what have you, you want them to kind of learn the things that you can't teach them at home, have the resources at home. Do you feel that's the most benefit value, to have that price increase, and where maybe that money could have gone to something else in the school?
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective, too. I think it would certainly be nice if all children had that experience at home. I know with busy families, working parents, fast food, not all kids get that. I think people choose Red Granite, because we do operate in this sort of holistic, community, family-style classroom, and it's something that we feel is really nurturing for our early childhood, to, to hold that, the rhythm of a home-like feeling. So that is a deliberate part of our pedagogy as well. I think if people wanted to opt-out, that's a conversation I would be more than happy to have. I'm not sure what it would look like, but all, all questions and conversations are welcome.
Hey, Ma.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I just wanted to say, I love the idea of using cooking to, to teach lessons, from mathematics and fractions to community, to the very aspects of hospitality, and how important that is. I kind of want to come have soup and bread with you, so, send me an email.
Please do.
But I, I love the idea, and I echo what Lance says, making sure that you have an option for the families that can't. If you're not familiar with it, the Wausau School Foundation has a Waldron Fund specifically for students who can't afford things, so if that does become an issue, that's an option as well, but thanks for sharing.
Thank you so much. That's a great tip.
Glad you brought that up, Sarah, because that was talked about at the assembly today with the all-staff assembly at Wausau East High School, and the foundation people got up and talked about how they're looking for ways to help different schools get by on, with their money, you know, and I kind of liked how they presented, so.
I've had the opportunity to be on that board for the last two years, and, and they do good work, and it's a great option and a resource for our kids and our teachers.
And that's why we have you on that board, so you can bring that information
Thank you for bringing that up.
back to the board, because we want to know that. So, okay, any other questions?
I think it's a matter of me seeing it properly, understanding, you know, what, what it all entails, but yeah, if there's, when that class starts or whatever, it'd be really cool to see it, so.
Well, we will most definitely invite you on Bread Day, I think. That's the best.
Well, the liaison listing has come out today, and all of us have received different
schools that we can go and see and be responsible for. Also, that doesn't say you can't go to a school that you've been going to and showing up and talking with people there, but this gives you an opportunity to be able to see what's going on in all the schools that we have in the Wausau School District, so it's a great opportunity. All right, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thanks so much.
Agenda item eleven, Darcy Beavers Darf will present the Wausau East and Wausau West Girls Golf Co-op Renewal Application. Well, how are you doing, Darcy?
Darcy lost all over here. Darcy couldn't make it tonight, so I'm happy to speak to the board.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yep, so it's just our renewal for our girls golf co-op, so Wausau West and Wausau East co-op for girls golf. It's been going for a few years now, so we are just asking the board to renew our co-op for next year. So they are in season right now, but our application for next year is going to be due October first, so we're just seeking approval from the board to continue this great co-op we have between our two schools.
And I'm looking forward to seeing all those girls get to the state tournament this year. I'll be there to back them up.
That'd be great.
All right, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the girls golf co-op between Wausau East and Wausau West.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Staff contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, Red Granite Charter School Student Fees. At the previous meeting, Red Granite Representatives presented proposed changes to the student fees for Red Granite 4K and kindergarten. 4K semester, thirty dollars, annual fee, sixty dollars, kindergarten semester fee, sixty, and then for the full year, a hundred and twenty dollars. I'm seeking a motion to approve the change to the Red Granite student fees for 4K and kindergarten students as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Requesting for a closed session, I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session, preliminary discussion regarding potential litigation according to Statute nineteen point eight five G.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call. We get in that routine of just simply, okay, let's pass this one. Roll call is always a necessity for, go ahead.
Sarah Brock?
Yes.
John Krieger?
Yes.
Nick Krieger?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Cory Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.[1307.26]